Good morning. Commissioner Gage-Fror, I'd like to welcome everybody to the commission meeting Tuesday, the 17th day of March 2020. To my right is Commissioner Jim Harvey. Excused today will be Commissioner Scott Jenkins. He has a personal funeral he's attending this morning, so we'll carry on without him. Appreciate everybody being here this morning. If we could ask people to please spread out a little bit and make sure we're within the six-foot requested area. Invocation, Zachary Damm will be our invocation giver this morning. Pledge of Allegiance by Ryan Cowley is in the back room. I will give the thought of the day, and then we'll have a presentation. We'll go to that point. Zachary, appreciate you being here as always.
Father, we thank you so much for this day that you've given us and for the way that you are always in control and that you are a sure refuge that we can trust. And we pray for you, that you would bless our day today and the commission, that you would help the commissioners as they consider the business that is before them, and as people come to present before them the issues that are before the county, that you would guide them with wisdom and discretion, that you would bring a spirit of unity and cooperation, that they would make decisions that are good and that are right. And we thank you that in all things we can place our rest and our trust in you. And we praise you for who you are and for all the things that you do for us, and for your many goodnesses that you show. It is in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Zachary. Ryan?
Let everyone please rise. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan. Commissioner, thought of the day, I don't see a lot of green out there. I know we've had a lot of issues on our plate, but today is St. Patrick's Day. And it's a day that we can look at some of our ancestors and what they've accomplished. I happen to be partially Irish blood in me. My grandfather was Irish, last name McCarty. In fact, my oldest, or my only granddaughter carries his namesake, McCarty Fror. And we need to appreciate, again, our people that came before us. And this is even always a day that's special in my heart, because this was my mom's birthday as well, Carolyn McCarty. And so we had a double celebration on St. Patrick's Day every year. And so I think that and respect for her and the Irish people out there. And I was actually fortunate to take a trip to Ireland a few years back. And I can say this, the Irish people are, if not the most friendly people I've ever met, in the top two or three. I did have occasion to visit a couple of golf courses over there, and I did have occasion to visit a pub or two, only to indulge in their shepherd's pie, of course.
Shepherd's pie.
Shepherd's pie, yeah. Just so the record's straight. And I never left one of those pubs without having people I'd never met before in my life acting like they were my best friend. And I can tell you, that's something that we can all learn a lot from, people we don't know, we respect, and we want to welcome them into our lives. So with that, Commissioner, I've got a, and I love Irish proverbs, sayings. I've got a couple here I'd like to give you. One of my favorites is this, "The reasonable man adapts himself to the world; the unreasonable one persists in trying to adapt the world to himself." That was actually George Bernard Shaw said that. "May the roof above us never fall in, and may the friends gathered below it never fall out." Just gives us remembrance about how important our friends are in our world. And a best friend is like a four-leaf clover, hard to find, but lucky to have. And so I think we can all be lucky for what we have in today's world. We know we're, we are at a time in this world where there's a lot of unforeseen, a lot of question marks of where we go in the future. But I can tell you this, if we, if we value those friendships, if we value our families, if we value our working relationships, at the end of the day, we'll get through it, Commissioner. That's my thought. Thank you very much.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. I love those thoughts. And I was thinking, now's a good time that we probably ought not, one after another, kiss the Blarney Stone.
Yeah, we have to, we have to be careful with that Blarney Stone and some of those relationships. We'll be careful with that. Before we do the presentation, I want to move the agenda a little bit. The first thing I'm going to shift is anybody that would like to come up for public comments, we're going to listen to those now, anybody with public comments. Ralph, come on up. For some reason, I knew that...
It's my Irish heritage. You saw that hit me.
Yeah, I can tell you've got some Irish blood in you. Ralph, that's great.
By the way, thank you to the sheriff for giving me this. What a pleasure it is to be able to receive this something right here. I just want to be able to...
Can you, hold on, we're going to get that microphone down to you. Thank you.
Oh, I talk loud enough anyway. But I just want to be able to, once again, reiterate how much I'm behind for the sheriff and the officers of this county, and how much that they do for trying to, for transparency, to be able to allow us to be able to be a county that we can have faith in that. I want to thank you guys for, that all that you guys did towards the efforts and everything we did for this winter with the homeless, and the efforts that we did to be able to keep the shelter into, to a place and into factor so that we can go ahead. I wanted to step up to be able to say that also, that we're looking that we're going to probably have an influx of people that we'll once again have to deal with. And I look to count on you guys to double your efforts that we did last year. We made a major, major, major dent in doing things that were productive for individuals, even all the way to, some researcher did and found out the vehicle replacement program and the different things that were able to help the individuals to be able to realize their self-worth, and that they count and they matter. That was one of the things that was focused upon behind this council here and the city council. And I just want to thank you for your efforts. Persons like myself that are out there in the trenches, it makes it easier when we have city government people, even though Fror is leading the way and Harvey's kind of tailing. But I just wanted to thank you for your efforts that you put together so that we were able to do all that we did during the winter months here and safely bring so many through it. And I look forward to this spring and these times, these times, to be able to have the work done for Lantern House and the different facilities that we have, to be able to, to be able to do some good for their individuals. I just want to be able to say, let you know that there is many people that have asked me to be able to verbalize and to thank you for the efforts that were given out. And we had a successful winter, being able to show that we cared and that we, we meant that, what we meant, what we said, that they were a part of the county, too. And I just want to thank everybody and all the services and all the different persons as we look to go into this next part of the year, and this, that, for all the effort to do. Stacy and all of them for putting up with me coming in as many times as I do, and this. But I just, I believe that they need to have a voice. And I can kind of talk a little bit loud, and I know Harvey. So we're going to do the efforts here right now. And I just want to thank you for, for that we're going to go do what we can to make it impactful. One of the things I do want to say, though, too, I think that we need to have a response that we have Morgan County and Davis County be a little more responsible in their funding efforts to be able to do some of the corrections that's going to be needed just ahead, and improvements that need to be done for the kitchen and the different areas, Lantern House and the services that we render over here. I think it's only fair that they pay their fair share, and not just a token, but they don't have to have a shelter. And it is a costly expense, and it is something that Weber County and Ogden City has taken on the shoulders for so many years. And I think we need to go ahead and review that so that we can have them pay their fair share. And that's, again, I just want to thank you and just let you know, I'll do my best efforts to continue doing for the people that I do for, and just thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Thanks, Ralph. Appreciate you being here as always. Before we move ahead, I think everybody is very much aware of the health situation that we're facing as a country, state and county. We have met as a county team, beginning last week, receiving pretty much daily, if not hourly, updates from the CDC and also the governor's office on the proper path forward as we look to protect the citizens in this county. I want to say publicly that I'm very proud of our Weber County team. We've met in two very long meetings, detailed meetings, that we discussed what we as a county do going forward in order to ensure the health of our citizens, in order to abide by both federal and state guidelines, but at the same time, doing what's right and proper for Weber County. And with that, I have a short white paper I'm going to read for, and this is public information, I believe, as of this morning. So it's also on the website for those that haven't had the time to check social media. But we wanted to make everybody aware of this. Again, I think our theme for Weber County is that we want to be safe, and at the same time, we want to be productive. We want to still serve the citizens in Weber County for the services that they need and deserve from this office as county. And we will continue to do that with the best of our ability, at the same time, taking steps to ensure the safety of not only our employees here in this office building, those throughout the county that work out the county, and for those in the public that would come to visit us for critical services. So with that, let me read this. "For the next 15 days, the Weber Center and the facilities I'm going to list below will be available by appointment only and close to the general public beginning March 17th at noon. Please call the respective department at the number linked below to set up your appointment. Those are on the website as well. Weber County staff are moving to a work-from-home or a critical crew as set by each of their department heads or elected officials. We will do our part to make sure we are facilitating appointments as quickly as possible to maintain a high customer service-oriented approach. Each of our departments remains absolutely committed to facilitating the role of government as seamlessly as possible to support our residents and our businesses." So let me just give the brief analysis of that. We're still very customer-friendly oriented. We want to make sure that those services that the public needs and desires will be provided. They'll be provided by our departments. We're going to have to have the appointment process in place, so we're going to ask the public to abide by that public process. And then look for the following facilities that will be available by appointment only. Number one, the Weber Center, as I just mentioned, all Weber County libraries, the Perry Egyptian Theater, Golden Spike Event Center, the Weber County Shooting Complex, Fort Benaventura, Weber County Ice Sheet, North Fork Park, David Eccles Conference Center, Observation Park, Weber Memorial Park. Excluding from that list are the Weber County Sheriff's Office and the Weber County Animal Shelter. If you can refer to the sheriff's social media pages for the most up-to-date information on that.
And the transfer station.
And the transfer station, exactly. Thank you for that. All public meetings of the commission will be broadcast via YouTube and Facebook. We're going to encourage the public to participate online, as well as monitoring any comments. We're going to monitor comments on both the social media and anything that we see. We will plan, at this point in time, on holding our regular scheduled commission meeting as we have it right now. But we're encouraging people to look for YouTube or online comments if possible. "We take very seriously our role in weathering the unique situation together. We are working diligently to achieve the best possible outcome for the long-term economic stability and the health of our community." And again, this is for the next 15 days. This is not right now planned for a long term, but until we get through that 15-day period of time, until we see what results that we are achieving, I can't guarantee that that won't be extended. So two very critical issues in our community, the way I see it. Number one, the health and safety. Number two would be the economic impact that this crisis has on our businesses, especially our small businesses. Our food service industry is impacted greatly. Our economic development team is aware of this. We'll be working with state officials as early as this afternoon, looking at being a resource for these small businesses, whether that be SBA loans, whether that be some type of state infrastructure that we can provide to them. We will be a resource for these small businesses to try to ease the pain as much as possible, knowing that we can't get them out of the situation we're in. Hopefully we can help them at least achieve some type of level of success maintaining their business environment as we work through this process. So that's my comment. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. It's important for everyone to understand, too, that through this experience, this crisis, whatever it is in people's lives, we recognize there's a lot of uncertainty. Almost everyone is in uncharted territory. We've been assured that water, sewer, and garbage won't be interrupted. It'll be, it'll be readily available, that power and heat and gas will be available to everyone. We recognize that, and we appreciate so much the medical teams. We've been working with medical teams. In many cases, I learned last night, late last night, from the IHC organization, that they're reassigning their staff. For instance, people who are getting colonoscopies, those have been delayed so that the staff that were doing those types of things could be reassigned to help with this pandemic. The same thing might be for an MRI, or things that are just uncomfortable at the time, but they can be postponed so that we can, so that IHC can put enough staff towards those things. We realize that when we ask people to not gather in groups of many, that this affects public places like funeral homes, like senior care facilities, like churches and businesses. This is a big deal. But we ask that you use good common-sense practices. You gather only if and when you need to or where you need to, and that you actually take time to enjoy, you enjoy your family. You take time to maybe find and enjoy some calm, to maybe spend some time to reflect on those things that have the most importance. We will have some interesting announcements. We invite you to tune into our Weber County social channels. Many of those things will be posted on there. You'll be able to find them from your phone or your computer quite easily, and you'll be able to find answers to those services. We realize that this will be an inconvenience for many. But we realize that alternative to that could be quite devastating. So this helps, this will greatly help our community if we just all together, we follow that. So those are my, those are my thoughts as it relates to that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do need to make an announcement. Ricky, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand if a person, a candidate is, wants to file in person, they can do so until tomorrow night, Thursday, excuse me, Thursday at 5:00 PM. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thursday at 5:00 PM, that's a hard deadline. Also, if they're running for a state office, that includes a state legislative position, they need to file a, an online disclosure, financial or a conflict of interest disclosure. That takes a bit of time, and we don't do that here at this office. They can just do it at home or on their phone beforehand. It can take up to two hours because there's a lot of questions.
Right.
So have them file that first, and then they can come in, and we can verify that they've, that the state has received that form and then help them.
And all those forms are available online, so a person could actually fill those out at home, bring those in, and pay their fees and file. Would that be correct?
Everything but the state legislating school board. So the county wants, but the disclosure is online.
Okay.
And the county and both the schools are going to have to accept it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thanks for asking.
Okay, let's move on now to the presentation on the Weber County Victim Witness Program. Leanne Nielsen, welcome from Weber County Attorney's Office. The time's yours. Appreciate you being with us.
Yes, I was directed by my supervisor to come and give, I think we do this yearly, to just give you some program updates. I had to put all of this in writing. I don't know if you received a copy of that, and...
We did.
Do you, I don't want to necessarily read this, but did you want me to just...
Yeah.
...maybe highlight some of these things?
That would be great. Uh-huh.
Okay. So the victim service provider, it's becoming kind of a growing profession across the country. This is kind of a grassroots profession that started, you know, 20 years ago, and it's, or more, 20, 30 years ago, but it's just growing and progressing year after year. And we've especially seen that growth here in Weber County within the last year or two. And we're seeing more and more victim service providers in our police departments, our city prosecutor's office, in our partners, in YCC, all of our partners across the county are starting to get funding to bring victim workers in. But one thing that our staff did, our victim service workers and our staff, was we all received an accreditation, which is basically like a license. There's not a formal education for becoming a victim service provider, but there is lots of ongoing trainings. Education is always available for us. But we were able to, through our work experience and education, able to apply for this credentialing, which basically were considered like kind of licensed victim service workers. So all five of us in our office were able to do that. We've also organized a county-wide meeting for advocates across the county to collaborate ideas and resources. Another great thing is we've kind of led the way in having a facility dog that has been proven to show that they really do help crime victims, especially child victims, vulnerable adult victims. So other, we're one of the first agencies, prosecuting agencies, to get that certification for a service dog and have a service dog that is part of our staff. Also, we offer a really great internship program through some of our local college and high school students that we are building up this community of students who are educated in what our office does and what this program and victim service work across the country is doing for people who are crime victims. And just to illustrate what our office has done, last year, 2019, we, our office filed over 6,100 cases here in Weber County. We prosecuted 2,600 felony cases, 1,312 misdemeanor cases, almost 1,700 juvenile cases, and then almost 500 justice court cases just here out of the Weber County Attorney's Office. So on average, each of us have approximately 100 cases involving victims at one time that we're servicing. So our workload is heavy. And we offer a lot of services that I've outlined in the document. And that's just some of the highlights I wanted to share. Do you have any questions?
Great. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if we welcome Tim Vanderenak here from the Standard Examiner. Thanks for being here. But if you could just go over those numbers of how many cases again, so that Casey...
Sure.
That was quite impressive, that our office here, our attorney's office handles such a heavy load with the number of cases. If you could do that again.
Sure. Yeah. So we prosecuted 2,625 felony cases, 1,312 misdemeanor cases, 1,698 juvenile, and 482 justice court cases. Another number from our victim program, we assisted in having court order restitution in the amount of over $733,000 just last year alone. And we sent out about 1,700 crime victim impact statements. So it kind of shows the magnitude of what we do in this program.
Of course, that would make us the most efficient attorney's office in the state.
I think so. I agree.
Tim may want a copy of your white paper there. I'm sure he would.
Sure, he can have this one.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet.
And again, this is just a, everybody knows that we have the premier county attorney's office in the state, Chris Allred and his group. We couldn't do what we do without his group. Chris Crockett's our right-hand person, and Courtland, everybody that, Brian, everybody that works with us directly on a day-to-day basis. We appreciate them very much, looking after our best interest, which is in the best interest of the county. So it's a, I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of the service the county attorney's office does, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Before we move ahead, I see Lance Peterson out there. Lance, is there anything that we need to know, as updates from state or federal regarding our current coronavirus? Lance Peterson, Emergency Service Director. I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
Oh, it's okay. It's all good. Commissioners, it's such a moving target right now. The governor's office was going to come out with some statements yesterday at 4:00. They didn't. And I understand they're supposed to come out today. You know, overnight, the big update is, you know, San Francisco has done a shelter in place for their population. Just extreme things and extreme times. So hold on. Just ask everybody in the community to just be patient, and let's just wait this out and see how it goes. But I commend you and Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Jenkins' leadership, you know, with the two great meetings we've had here with your senior policy folks here, trying to outline what we can do to take care of the community and what we can do to take care of our employees and keep services going. It's just been, let's see, what was the word that was used on the attorneys here a minute ago?
Efficient.
No, outstanding or something?
Outstanding.
Just wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you. Lance, we appreciate what you do. You do great service for the, this is truly when your services are needed the most, and you stood up and been a huge benefit to the county and to us as we move forward making decisions. And I wanted you to publicly know that. So with that, anything else before we move on to consent items?
I'm ready to move on. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. F1, request for approval of warrants, number 2524 through 2555, and 448094 through 448254, in the amount of $798,383.77. Two, request for approval of purchase orders, in the amount of $272,966.1. Three, request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on March 10, 2020. Four, request for approval of new business licenses. Five, request for approval of the First Amendment to contract by and between Weber County and Ogden City Redevelopment Agency extending the term of the contract relating to the Kiesel Parking Structure Agreement. Six, request for approval agreement by and between Weber County and the State of Utah, DAS, DFCM, for pass-through funding for the Ogden Ice Sheet project. And seven, request for approval change order number three on contract with Staker Parsons for 12th Street Project, Street Project Segment Three, which I believe we've been briefed on. Commissioner Harvey, questions on those?
Commissioner, with regards to the expenses, I had a chance to review those, including the minutes, and I'm grateful to the respective... the minutes, and I'm grateful to the respective department directors who have enlightened us on those other orders like the, like the DAS DFCM pass-through funding for the Ice Sheet and also for the 12th Street. Those are very helpful. Many of you are in the audience today, and we appreciate that. So I'd like to hear some backup from Ricky.
Great. Ricky?
The 33 purchase orders we issued this week were for $273,000. Three of them account for 20%, or 19% each. $53,000 for the jail to replace showers, the Health Department for vaccines, and the Conference Center for elevator repairs and maintenance, as well as some labor and concessions. We had two POs that equated to 14% of that amount, or $39,000 IT, which was primarily, will go towards replacing computers, as well as some switches, and then for the attorney's office to replace their cubicles. We had one item at 6% or $16,000 for the library, and that is for RFID card printing, as well as some kitchen equipment repairs. 5% or $14,000 for the sheriff's office, and that will go to purchase SWAT shields. As far as checks, we issued 193 checks for $798,000. Half of that amount, or $402,000, was for the transfer station, and that's almost exclusively disposal fees. And then 17% or $134,000 is for the jail, and that went towards buying food, the policy manual update, and mental health services for inmates. And today's my dad's birthday, so we share parental birthdays on St. Patty's Day.
St. Patty's Day. It's a great day to celebrate a birthday. Thank you. Commissioner Harvey, any questions?
No questions.
Let me just review on five, the Ogden City Redevelopment extending the term of the contract on the Kiesel structure. That's an agreement that we had with Ogden City that expired regarding some, approximately a million one, that was, was agreed to give to a future parking structure on Kiesel with Ogden City that would secure some, a number, a certain number of stalls in the event that that parking structure was built. The contract had expired, been, well, probably two years that an expiration. The part that concerned me was Ogden City was holding our money with no valid agreement. And so I put forth an agreement that they have now signed that specifies an extension for a 12-month period of time, but gives us the right to request those funds back under certain dates and conditions, and would also pay us an interest rate, Commissioner, in the event, in the event that they still hold that money. So we still are in agreement that the parking structure is needed, but this is a valid agreement that puts us at least back into a formal contract that we have an interest rate established with it. And if they can, with the Conference Center, RFP and some of the things we're doing with the Conference Center, are able to come up with the funding for a parking structure at some point in time, that secures our position. So.
That's, I think it's very, that's one of the nice things that I see, Commissioner, with your background and expertise, your experience in the private sector that's helped run Weber County more like a business, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make that motion that we approve the consent items as listed F through 1 and including 7 today.
Thank you. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Action items, G1, Weber County Board of Canvas certification of results, certification of results of presidential primary election. Mr. Ryan Kelly, come on up. And I think we have your members in front of us, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Kelly, time's yours.
You do. We'll also need to invite Mr. Bond to come up and join you.
Mr. Bond?
No, it's Mr., isn't it, correction, Mr. Kelly, is it Mr. Bond or Mr. Ulliberry?
It'll go the treasurer first, and then if he's not available, then it would be the assessor or the sheriff.
And the reason we're having him do this, if you'll just explain to the public that's watching maybe on video?
Yeah, so the Board of Canvas meets to certify the election results, and in order to do that in a commissioned form of government, there needs to be at least three members of that Board of Canvas. And where Commissioner Jenkins is at a funeral, then one of the other elected officials, and it's in state code, the order that those officials would participate in the Board of Canvas.
Welcome, Mr. Bond. Mr. Bond, have a seat. Do we have your name tag up here for here?
No, sir. I'm good.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ryan.
All right. So it's good to be here. I want to talk for just a minute about the election first, before we get to the results and the numbers. This election was pretty unique. We did two things that were quite a bit different than we ever have done in the past. The first is we got our mail sorting machine that we were able to get grant money for, that we were looking to purchase last year, that we ended up getting the beginning of this year, and that worked amazing. That's a game changer for our office to be able to sort ballots, and it also helps manage the signature verification process for us. And so that was, that was the first thing that was awesome. It really will help our office going forward. The second thing that we did is we consolidated all of our polling places, and we did one centralized vote center. And anytime we do something new in elections, there's always a little bit of give and take, and there's a learning curve with that. And so this was something that we wanted to try. We felt like the presidential primary was the right time to try that, and it actually worked quite well for us. We did receive a lot of positive feedback. There was some negative feedback, mostly because some people didn't know about it, and there are some distances that people had to travel to get to Union Station. With that, one of the reasons we chose Union Station is because it's an iconic and historic building that everybody knows where it's at. It's centrally located, being right next to the frontrunner station. All of the major transportation routes in the county have easy connections to that place. There's great parking. We made arrangements for the parking lot to the south in case the Union Station, which has 200 dedicated parking spots for us, plus about 75 for the restaurants, and we also had that additional parking. So in bigger elections and things like that, we knew had, we had the ability to properly park people and get people in and out of there. For me, one of the biggest benefits of using Union Station was what we could do for the disability community. A lot of times our voters come in and they are a little bit more elderly. Sometimes they have mobility issues, things like that. We were able to, with the help of a lot of departments in the county, we were able to get a people mover from the Parks Department, so we could shuttle people from their cars. We were able to get a wheelchair, so when people walked in and they were unable to stand for a few minutes, we were able to just put them into a wheelchair and help them through the process. We were able to create some shortcuts through the polling place to get people who had mobility issues or visual impairments, things like that, to get them through the process quickly so that they could exercise their constitutional right to vote and get through our polling place. And the best part is, is we were able to alleviate the lines. We processed half as many voters in this election as we did in 2018 through one polling place, using a third of the resources. And the longest lines we had all day were about 10 minutes. My wife went in at about 5:15 to vote, and that was one of our peak times. And from the time she stepped in the door, she started a timer, until the time she walked out, it was seven minutes. And you compare that to what we've had in other elections, you know, the libraries have been such a great polling place for us. You know, they're nice, public buildings, they're spread out throughout the county. But once we get into a situation where we have an overwhelming number of voters coming in person, there really isn't much we can do. They're cramped, they're tight, they're, they're really hard to maneuver through. And so doing Union Station really gave us the opportunity, I think, to serve that community very, very well. The other thing that I feel was very important to us is this is the first election, like I really felt like we've been able to take care of our poll workers. Our poll workers take and work a 15-hour shift, virtually non-stop. This time, we were able to give them regular breaks, even though we had fewer people working the polls, we were able to give them regular breaks. We were able to provide lunch for them. And at the end of the day, they weren't completely exhausted and worn out from, from the experience of voting. And that, that's a huge thing. That helps keep the positive energy in the polling place, and they're really kind of the backbone of what makes our election successful. With that, like I said, one of the biggest feedbacks that we heard from people who didn't like voting at Union Station was the lack of knowing that that's where they needed to vote. And with that, we put the notice on our website. It was mailed in each individual ballot, as well as being on the outside of the envelope that was sent to voters. We plastered it all over social media, including many of the community pages that we have in our, our community. It was in many of the standard articles. It was published on the newspaper, on the public notice website. Those are some things we can look at and find out how we get that message out better in the future if we do do this. You know, we want to evaluate how this election went first before we decide how we're going to proceed going forward. But we did try our very best to get the word out to people that that would be the polling place that would be used. The last thing I want to say before we get into the numbers is really the, the two hardest things about this election were, first of all, the numbers of registrations. Our office is very small, especially when you compare it to other similar-sized counties in not only our state but around the country. We have three full-time staff members. With that, we processed 14,138 voter registrations since Christmas. And so you do that on top of running an election. We had the referendum that we were doing signatures for, the tax referendum, the state referendum, and all the other things we have going on. That's a pretty remarkable number to process through that many voter registrations. The other thing that was a particular challenge with this election was the overwhelming media presence that we had on Election Day. That was something we've never experienced in Weber County. And, you know, it was quite frankly very difficult because we all have jobs to do. We're a small staff, and that did take a lot of time. But on the flip side too, it also gave us an opportunity to showcase what we do and let the media kind of into our world a little bit and see some of the things that we did to help make the election a success. So challenging, but in the end, I think it was a very positive experience as well. So going into the numbers really quickly, on the Republican side, we had 24,763 Republican ballots cast, which equal to 50.7% turnout. On the Democratic side, we had 13,767 ballots cast, which represents an 88.4% turnout. Of the ballots that we received, 91% were cast either by mail in a drop box or cast early, and 45% of those were delivered through the mail, 55% through drop boxes, and then 9% voted early, either regular or provisionally. And the total turnout of the registered voters that were eligible for this election was 59.7%, which is a really pretty amazing turnout for presidential primary. Of the ballots that were returned by mail, we were able to count 34,630 of those. Undeliverable ballots were at 2%, which a typical mailing's at 10%. And we've always been able to be well under that. Typically, we've ranged from about 1.8% to about 2.5% undeliverable rates. We do work hard to make sure that we have addresses up to date. We did not count 473 ballots that were returned to our office. 194 of those were returned past the deadline, and there's no allowance in state code for us to be able to accept those. 88 ballots were returned unsigned, and that's the one that just puzzles us. We, we don't understand why voters don't sign their ballot. There's a nice big stop sign. There's a big red arrow right where you sew the envelopes. We're going to continue to look at the design of our envelope, but it, that one just puzzles me. I don't quite understand why voters don't sign those, those ballots. And then we had 191 signatures that didn't match what we have on file. Some of that's because we have older signatures. People's signatures change. But every one of those voters were mailed a letter or contacted and given the opportunity to correct the deficiency with their ballot. And we had a lot of people that were sent letters that did return those, but 191 of those did not correct that. Of the provisional ballots cast, we had 355 cast. We were able to count 324 of those. Of those, 133 were same-day registrants. That means people that moved into the county that had never registered here, or people who had never registered at all. So that's pretty neat that 133 people were able to register that day and cast a provisional ballot. The main reason that we weren't able to count provisional ballots were incomplete applications, where they just didn't fill out all of the information or sign it. And then the other reason was sometimes people were affiliated with the wrong party. So like, for example, the Republican Party was a closed primary. You had to be a Republican to participate. So if somebody from another party wanted the Republican ballot, and they were registered with another party, there's nothing we could do to count their, count their ballot. So with that being said, really, the, the most important part is the numbers, and these just represent Weber County. They aren't the state totals. On the Republican side, Donald Trump got 88.24% of the vote. And then the others, you can read there. On the Democratic side, Bernie Sanders got 36.5, Joe Biden got 19.47, Mike Bloomberg got 16.93, and Elizabeth Warren got 13.71, and the rest you can read there. But those are, excuse me, represent the final results for Weber County. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you have, and then ask that you approve the canvas.
Thank you. Ryan, questions?
No, you know, I'm just, Ryan, you did a wonderful job. And the only questions I had were that, how to notice and make sure people knew, as you covered in your presentation, which I thought was awesome. You know, having been through this process from the front side and the back side, I really appreciate what you and your team do. I, especially as we look at situations in other counties throughout the state, I, I think this is the greatest team in the, in the whole state. You guys do a wonderful job. You know, I often find myself, found myself, I remember when I was younger, it would, it wouldn't be until 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning on Christmas morning that I found myself okay. Now it's time to read the instructions. I started putting things together and, oh my gosh, something wasn't quite right. And when I finally got to the instructions, it was, what I'm saying is it was just too late. And so I think many of us, especially the dads in the room, are creatures of habit. We can do things we think we could, how I got this figured out, I don't need the instructions. And by the time you get to them, it's 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock on a, on a Tuesday, the day of the primary election, and it's a little too late. So I really like the messaging, what you've done, and I think there's been a lot of great and creative minds that have gone into how people react and just keep doing a great job. Hopefully, these next two weeks will give people the opportunity to learn how to use their phones, and learn how to use the websites, and learn how to be a little more interactive with some of the ways we communicate nowadays. And that'll help you as the June dates and the November dates come up, and we'll be able to message even more efficiently because of that.
Thank you. Mr. Bond, questions, comments?
Comment. I've had the chance for the last 20 years to volunteer in the election area, prior to hanging chads and everything else. And it's exciting for me to see the progress that they've made over the last period of time, and the professional manner that they approach this whole thing in, and the, the public exposure that you're getting more now than ever. And you've done that in such a really good way, and you're getting more efficient. It's fun to watch the progress happen.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. And I think the, just under 60% turnout is really a credit to what you and your department has done for informing the public about voting, making it convenient. The vote by mail, obviously, 90% is a great number. And, you know, and I appreciate, I know that there was immediate attention, immediate attention given to the pilot program at the Union Station. In my opinion, that was a good move. We looked at balancing resources versus voter turnout. I've had some discussions with you personally and Ricky about looking at that in the future, and I appreciate your, your interest in maybe trying to smooth some of those rough edges as we move forward. Ricky, do you have comments? Since this is your, your area.
Just echoing the comments that we really do have one of the best elections teams in the country. They are innovative and care about the objectivity and professionalism of the election, the integrity. And I see that throughout the country, that election officials, that's really what, what we care about. And our team takes that to the top level. They just do a fantastic job. And we appreciate the feedback from the community. We've reached out to the, to several voter interest groups prior to the election to let them know what our intentions were and about this pilot. And we've gotten some feedback from them, and we're taking a look at things and always looking for ways to improve. So.
Appreciate that. Ryan, anything else?
I just want to thank, especially my staff. Like I said, you know, we're a small staff, but they do, they do amazing work, given the, the resources. You know, we, we do a really work hard and care about the process. I just want to thank them.
Yeah, and we appreciate what you do and your staff, Ryan. You do amazing work, and I think the public does appreciate that, just by you can see the significance of the turnout here with the voter confidence. So with that, commissioners, ready for a motion to approve the canvas?
I'll make the motion that we approve the canvas as presented by Mr. Kelly, as, approve it as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bond. All those in favor say aye.
Is it a roll call, Fatima, or no? Aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Election certified. Let's move now. Thanks, Mr. Bond.
Thanks, Mr. Bond.
That seat's open if you want to sit there.
Oh, really?
Thank you for being with us. Okay, let's move on. Request for approval of a contract buy-in between Weber County and Vital Core Health Strategies for inmate healthcare services. Chief, Aaron Perry, Sheriff's Department. Welcome.
Commissioners, good morning. Thanks for the time.
I'm here today to ask for your approval of a contract between the Sheriff's Office and Vital Core Health Strategies for the provision of medical services to the inmates in the facilities, in both the Kiesel facility and the 12th Street facility. As I begin this discussion, I want to start with, the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution requires that we provide medical care and psychiatric care for the inmates that are in our facilities. I've had the opportunity recently, as, over the last week or so, to work with our nurses that work in the jail and provide current medical services for these inmates. As recently as last night, I had the opportunity to work with these nurses, and I want to point out how impressed I am with them. In no way does this request for approval to go to this contract reflect on the care that our nurses give. Last night, I saw several nurses that were very willing to stay, and we see this day in and day out, to stay way beyond their shifts, that serve these inmates with compassion and objectivity regardless of why they're being held in there. You watch the care of those individuals, and I think as society, we could learn so much about the way they treat those individuals regardless of what they've been charged of or what crimes they've committed. They're serving them, or to a degree, the way they're even treated by those individuals, and they serve them with a compassion that's unmatched, quite frankly, in my opinion. At the heart of this contract is really my desire to provide them with additional needed resources in order to do the job effectively. So I want to give you a little bit of a background of how we currently provide medical services. Currently, we contract with a physician, who has physician assistants that contract with him, a dentist that contracts with him. We carry a contract with an X-ray company to come in and do mobile X-rays as we need them, other diagnostic services as we need them. We contract with a laboratory service for them to come in or for us to send out blood work as we need that to be done. Currently, our nursing staff, our medical staff, and our clerks are county employees. Under the new agreement, these employees would no longer be county employees, and they would become contract employees under this agreement with this company. The well-being of our nurses is paramount to me and to the sheriff, and to the administration of the Sheriff's Office. We understand, I understand personally, the anxiety that this contract has created in the Sheriff's Office of change and change of what we're doing, and there's been a lot of questions about how is this going to impact my job. We've been in contact with this company. The company has agreed that every medical staff currently employed by Weaver County will be guaranteed a job with their agency, and that not a single one of those individuals will take a pay, reduction in pay. I want to walk through a little bit through the process of how we got here. This is a process that's been ongoing and been a big part of my day-to-day life for the last 16 or 17 months. We started to really look at ways that we can improve. I feel very strongly that there's always a better way. We should always be looking for a better way and things that we should do. We did a lot of things, myself and my team, those that were assisting over that period of time, to look at national standards, look at trends, to go visit other facilities. We took a trip down to Dallas County and visited their facility. They, I believe it was in 2005, entered consent decree with the federal government, and after, I think, 12 years of work and about $250 million, they made the changes that were required in that consent decree. And we went down and saw those, saw those facilities, listened to their story, in an effort to try to get ahead of the curve, if you will, or to identify those problems that we have before they become problems or those problems lying in wait, and get ahead of them. One thing that we identified during the trip to Dallas, the healthcare administrator down there was asking us questions. We were sharing information between our two facilities. We house approximately, on average, 900 to 1,000 inmates. To give you an idea of the difference in numbers, Dallas County, their facility houses 8,000 inmates. But as we were having this conversation about how we run and things we do, one simple question was asked about our dentist time. How much time, how much time is your dentist in the facility? And this individual, this health service administrator that had gone through this process, this consent decree process with the federal government and with their facility, told us during that visit, you're way under the national standard, and if they come and inspect, that's an area that needs to improve. As we did the research, we identified another area that we lack in is our lack of psychiatric care in the facilities, specifically a psychiatrist in the facility to provide those services, again, that are required under the Constitution to those inmates as needed. We have great partners currently. We partner with Alpha Counseling. They do a great job with their licensed clinical social workers of providing services. Our doctors provide great service, but we have a gap there of not having that specialty, if you will, that psychiatrist, to be able to fill that gap in some of those unique circumstances that we deal with. This is a particularly high-risk case. As we did our research, we identified several individuals, several lawsuits of a million dollars or more that involved suicide, where the individual committed suicide, and the county or the agency operating the facility lost that lawsuit due to the fact that they weren't providing adequate mental health services. It's not enough to try to solve the problem with the correctional facility or isolation or with a deputy. We need to provide that additional psychiatric care. We also identified that, you know, currently, currently our contract with our physician, total physician time is about 24 hours a week. We identified a gap there that that needs to increase. We've operated for that, for some, under that standard for some time, and that needs to increase. 24 hours a week for 1,000 inmates isn't sufficient amount of time. We also, on our nursing side, our structures, we have 15 full-time nurses, some PRN or part-time positions, but we have one supervisor. One supervisor that, in addition to running the schedule and being in the trenches with the nurses and taking care of those day-to-day needs, is saddled with all those other additional responsibilities of recruitment, retention, training, contracts, all those administrative responsibilities. And so we identified a need for an additional administrative position above that nurse manager, if you will, to take care of those administrative responsibilities. So we identified all these needs, and then we started looking, we started looking at the alternatives. We started looking at what are our options in order to make these improvements? And it really came down to one or two options. We could continue under the model that we have, or we could try to build where we keep the nurses as county employees, and we could try to build this thing from ground up, or we could reach out to a private company that provides all of these contracts into one and provides all these services for us. So we went out to RFP. We went through that process. Vital Core came out on top of that process. One of the unique things I'd like to speak of about that process is we didn't go into that process and ask for X number of doctor time, X number of nurse time, X number of psychiatric time. We provided them with our number of inmates, our average number of sick call, with the incidents and the informations, and let them put together a recommended level of staffing and services for our facility. We were all very impressed with the level of services, and the Vital Core proposed, they're proposing between a nurse practitioner in psychiatrics and a psychiatrist, about 32 hours a week in our facility, which will definitely bridge that gap that we have in some of those inmates that need that additional care, and to provide that resource for our doctors, for somebody that's got that specific training in that area. Under the new contract, we would get an additional approximately 40 hours of physician and nurse practitioner time than we currently are getting. We would get that additional administrative position, if you will, to handle those administrative responsibilities, as well as about two additional FTEs on the nursing level. The annual cost for this contract in year one is just under $3.3 million. We currently have that in our budget. The term of the contract is a one-year term with four optional renewals, annual renewals. We currently have, on ongoing costs, we have sufficient funds to fund year one and year two. In year three, we may need to ask for additional funding, but we believe that we are going to, as we start the contract, we believe that we're going to see some savings in decrease to transports to the hospitals. As you look at these contracting companies, that's usually where the biggest savings comes from, is the decrease to, the decrease of transports to an outside facility. When we transport an inmate to an outside facility, not only do we incur the cost of that visit or that charge, we incur overtime costs for those officers to come out off duty because we don't staff additional people to go sit on somebody at McCady or Ogden Regional, so we have to pay overtime with those officers sitting there. And if facility our size, that could be, that can be a significant potential savings We looked really hard as a team at this, at the option of trying to build this from the ground up versus going with the contract. And at the end of the day, we have a need. We have a need to improve the services in our facility. We are, in my opinion, we are under the national standard in care that we're providing. Again, this has nothing to do with the individual services that our nurses provide. I believe we have some of the finest nurses in the country that work for us, and again, care for these inmates like you wouldn't believe. But we need to improve our services to reduce our liability and to provide care that's in line with the national standard. We need to improve our services. To try to build this from the ground up would take a lot of time, is you're trying to hire those individual parts piece by piece, and I, we don't have that time. This is going to take a while in the transition to get this transition, and it'll be a little bumpy for a little while, but it'll be a lot quicker than us trying to build this from the ground up. We have, again, this is an annual contract, so we have the option to get out annually or renew or renegotiate. We also have a 90-day exit clause for convenience, so we could get out with 90 days. I want, I just, as I close, and I hand it to you commissioners for questions, this is not something that we took lightly. This is something that we looked at hard and long. I had a team of lieutenants, the county attorney's office helped look through the legalities of this, the clerk's auditor's office helped go through some of the finances, and I greatly appreciate those individuals for the time that they helped us with this. I feel very strongly, commissioners, this is the direction that we need to head in for the county, for the citizens that we serve. We're very aware of the need to be fiscally responsible with taxpayers' dollars. We constitutionally have a requirement to take care of these inmates. This is, this is an improvement that we need to make, and it's my recommendation that we sign this contract and enter a contract with Vital Core Health Strategies. Questions?
Thank you, Chief. Great presentation. Commissioner Harvey, I'm sure you've got a couple of questions or comments.
Thank you. Sheriff Roar. I, I've never been a doctor, never been a nurse. I've never worked in law enforcement. But I have been behind the line, not into the details of you, as you have just explained. I've seen what the nurses, the glimpse of what they go through. I have a tremendous appreciation for people who are willing to do that job. It's amazing. You talked to, and as we have talked, as you briefed us before the meeting weeks ago or last week, you talked about your love, care, and compassion, Chief Perry, and, you know, having never been any of the aforementioned, I trust you, you're, with what you do. I think you represent your team and staff very good, and certainly with genuine care and compassion. And I want you to know, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I currently, just to, I want to be absolutely clear. Do we offer any type of psychiatric care at this time?
By a psychiatrist, no. We, we had a recent case where we were running out of options. We were running, this individual is still being housed in our facility, we were running out of options. And so we, as we've educated ourselves and learned about this need or the gap for that psychiatrist to act as a consultant or be able to come in and add that specialty, this recent example really illustrated the need for that. We can look outside. One of the things we tried to do with this most recent case, we worked with Weaver Human They provided, they've got a psychiatrist on staff, so they, so we were able to work, use their assistance for this particular case. But long-term, that, you know, long-term, that would require a contract, that would require additional monies. So to answer your question, no, we don't have, we don't, we don't have a psychiatrist currently that we can access on a regular basis.
I have a tremendous concern about mental health, mental health in today's society and in our community, tremendous concern. Would this new contract, again, would this new contract provide psychiatric care?
Yes, it will. It'll provide 12 hours of a psychiatrist in the facility. It'll also provide 24 hour, or 20 hours a week of a nurse practitioner with a specialty in psychiatry in the facility. The other thing that we looked at, if I may, as we looked at kind of the trade-offs between trying to build this ourselves or contracting out, one of the things that we would lose, and one of the reasons that I believe that trying to build ourselves could be potentially more expensive in the long term is, is these companies do this nationwide, build this network of resources that we have access or our staff would have access to. This particular company goes through George Washington Medical School or University. And so if they need a specialty that they can't access, then they just teleconference in telehealth with those individuals, whether it be psychiatric care cardiologist, OB-GYN, you've got all those additional services. So we are, to answer your question, we are getting psychiatric, under this contract, we would get psychiatric time in our facility, but we'd also have additional resources outside our facility through telehealth programs.
Very good. Can you tell me about how much time is allocated towards the transportation and just the deputy that just waits or I guess attends at the hospital or at those medical facilities? How much time is currently spent by the Sheriff's Office in those services? Is there a percentage or a man, or what is known by that?
Commissioner, I don't have hard numbers on that. We've recently started, started to study that. We've recently started, started to study that and try to track it, but I don't have the data going back very far. I can tell you it ebbs and flows. Most recently, over the last week, we've, we've had very few, knock on wood, transports to outside facilities. About three weeks ago, we went a period of about seven to 10 days where our time, we were tracking our time for one inmate to be outside of the facility. We were averaging about 20 to 30 hours per day in that week. So if you're averaging in one week 30 hours for at least one officer of overtime, if not two in some cases, that adds up really quick. I don't have the long-term data, but I do anticipate that that would be the biggest cost savings, is going to be in that transportation cost.
Those time and a half hours could be, could be used towards crediting the future contract, and then this really, would this be an increase then in cost if you add that credit into it, or would it be a wash? So would we, in your estimation, Chief, would we be getting additional services for, once the credits are applied, for estimated the same?
We would, I feel comfortable that we would, we would cover, the contract has a 4% increase per year. I feel very comfortable, we would cover that with the savings. There is an, there is an increase, initially, there's an increase. There absolutely is an increase initially compared to what we're providing or what we're currently paying, but also we're getting a significant increase in services from where we currently are.
You used the term fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars. Knowing what you know, in your position, do you feel like this is fiscally the right choice for your department to move forward with?
Yes, Commissioner, I do. I think it's going to reduce liability for us for two reasons. One, it's going to, it's going to increase the standard of care that we're providing, the resources for our providers to provide those needs to our individual inmates. There's also going to be a level of indemnification in that agreement, where if, if there's an isolated incident by medical under that contract, we're not going to carry the liability to an extent for that. So I, again, I believe very strongly that we are under the national standard. So if we, if we have an incident, we do the best we can. Not only our nursing staff, but my custody staff does, does a tremendous job at dealing with these individuals that are going through crisis and understandably are in the worst position of their lives. But at the end of the day, if we're not able to prevent somebody from committing suicide, and we know that the state of Utah jails and the state of Utah as a whole have been under scrutiny since 2015, 2016 for leading the nation for a period of time in in custody suicide deaths in jails. So there's, there's liability there. So yes, again, we need to be fiscally responsible. With that being said, we absolutely, absolutely need to make these improvements, and right now, the contract is the quickest way to get there.
Thank you, Commissioner Roar. That's my questions.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a couple of comments, and we're going to move on with this. So this is not a new issue, even though this is new as far as our agenda. This is something that the chief and the sheriff and I have been talking about for probably over 12 months, Commissioner, since this is in my portfolio. I know that they, about a year ago or sometime shorter than that, visited Dallas and looked at the medical facilities there. I was able to attend a conference in Spokane regarding this health issue of inmates and realizing that the liability issue out there is real. Dallas paid X number of millions of dollars for a suit liability. Spokane was sued and was found in violation. So, under the Constitution, as you mentioned, Chief, we are required to provide services. And in our past discussion, the question in my mind is, can we build our own services at a cost that would be less than what we can contract for? Equal services that would also include some indemnification on the liability issue? And after reviewing that with you and the chief and your team at the sheriff's department, it's my conclusion that we can't do that. And again, no fault of the personnel, the nurses you have, it's the premier staff, we just don't have the resources available to rise to this level of care that we can contract for. I'm a true believer that sometimes we can contract for services less than we can do that ourselves. I think, I think, Commissioner, this is one of those cases. I don't think it's possible to get to the level of services we need, and I've been briefed by our legal staff, and I would agree that the standards that exist in law today, we're probably not providing that standard that would give us a pure path forward if we were taken to court. I think there's a good chance that we would have some liability. So we have to weigh, Commissioner, the cost of that potential liability, and I would say this, it is potential, but under the Constitution, we don't have a lot of wiggle room. There's not a lot of gray area in that, and I think there's too much gray area in the services that we provide now that would, would dictate that we look to increase those services at a cost, again, that's already in the budget and that we, and I truly believe that with, if I looked, I've looked at these transportation costs, had that discussion, even though we can't put a finite number on that today, I believe that it does exist out there for cost savings. In 12 months, we can review it. Again, this is a 12-month renewable contract. If we find that, that maybe that this is not the thing for us, or there's a better provider down the road, I'm going to suggest we look at that. But we had a conference call with a sheriff, a jail facility in Ohio, I believe it was, just last week, and we had basically 100% rating for this contractor, that he was very satisfied with the services they provided, standards of care were there, reduced liability, and I think that's the benefit of this contract, Chief, if I have summarized that correctly.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Very good.
Anything else, Commissioner?
I do, just one thing, and I'll do my best, is on our live chat, and we're going to try to do better with live chats here, this is all new to us, so we have a live chat going on with Merrily Foster. She's asked some very specific questions, some which, they're very, very specific, but Merrily, we will get back to you specifically with the answers to those questions here shortly. I also want to tell you and interrupt, so to speak, on this, too, this will be an announcement to you, Tim, but we will have at 1:00 today, a, we will have a press conference with the governor and lieutenant governor regarding an emergency briefing on COVID-19. Sorry, that came in during your presentation, so there's quite a few things we're balancing, so we can't get to some of the specifics on that right now.
Thank you for that update. Additional questions? I'm ready for motion.
I don't have any additional questions. I think what really turned me on this contract, because I wasn't forward in the beginning because of our people, honestly, but when I sat across the table from you, Chief, and I looked into your eyes and I saw the genuineness that was presented and the deep thought that went into the existing employees as it relates to our employees here and the care, and then the care for the bigger picture, I realized that this was probably a good thing, and I need to trust your and your team's judgment that made this decision. So with that, Sheriff Roar, it's, I'll make the recommendation, I'll make the motion that we approve the contract buying between Weber County and VitaCore Health Strategies for inmate healthcare services.
Thank you. I'll second that. One more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Contract's approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I want to congratulate the sheriff. He's the one that's been pushing this as well, understanding the dynamics of what's taking place in our health services as required by the Constitution. So, you know, this was not an easy, this was not an easy lift for the sheriff's department. This wasn't an easy lift for us, but I can tell you this, that's, the sheriff's department looks very diligently at their obligations to this county and the inmate population and the population they serve. So, thanks to your team, Sheriff.
So, Sheriff, one thing, if you wouldn't mind getting with your people and getting with Merrily, I don't want to discount that, but even posting, let's let everybody, include everybody on that discussion and getting back to her specific questions and answer those, so we can get a timely response and be as, as open and as forthright and transparent as possible. I have no problem with that. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Discussion and interaction on a conditional use request for Halison Estates, planned residential unit development consisting of 39 residential units and a 10-acre open space parcel. Tammy Adalock, welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Tammy.
How's it going?
Good.
Good. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a PRUD.
Can I interrupt for a second, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
You know, Tammy, I just, I got to tell you, I appreciate you so much. I know you're active in the community. I know you do stuff outside of work that benefits kids, and just your leadership and example and your mentorship is, often goes unrecognized but doesn't go unnoticed, and I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
I'll second that. Go ahead, Tammy.
This is the first step in, in the PRUD process, is receiving approval from the commission for the conditional use permit. This particular request includes an eligibility and a request for 30% bonus density, which would give this overall development 39 residential units as well as a 10-acre open space parcel that, according to the applicant, will be used for agricultural purposes.
The open space will be used for agricultural?
Yes, sir.
Good, okay, good to know.
Do you have any questions?
Questions, Commissioner?
Would a ski pond be termed agricultural?
No, sir. No. The intent of the owner is to main, of the applicant is to maintain ownership and lease the land to local farmers. They've situated the open space in an area so that there is a contiguity maintained with the land and the irrigation out that way.
So, just to be specific, then this will not be a ski, water ski park in the middle of all the homes, but a, more of an agricultural-type purpose in the middle of all those farms? Is that, do I understand it correctly?
That is the request at this time, yes.
I could buy into that, Commissioner.
Yeah, especially if it, you know, adjoins additional agricultural land, which I believe it does out there.
It does, yes.
Then it makes sense to keep it an agricultural piece, and I'm sure you can find some farmers that would get involved with that. So, questions? Anything else, Tammy?
That, that would be it.
Thank you. Ready for motion?
Motion to support our planning commission and approve this Halison Estates, the PRUD development, as presented by Ms. Adalock.
Thank you. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Tammy. Let's move to agenda item four, request for approval of contract buying between Weber County and Pictometry International for aerial photography. Mr. Yulberry.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners.
Good morning.
It's good to see you here. Everybody's happy and healthy?
So far, we're doing great.
Okay, the contract before you today is between Weber County and Pictometry International. It's just simply a renewal of the current contract for a term of three years. Pictometry provides both orthographic and oblique aerial photography for us. This photography allows us to comply with our state-mandated review of physical characteristics. As you know, we're on a five-year cycle. The product increases collection efficiency, allows us to, number one, collect it quicker, and so the costs are lower, and it also allows us not to disturb the occupants of the homes when we go out, and, so we don't have to go out and knock on the door and disturb them. And so what we're doing is, we're, excuse me, respectfully requesting the commission approve the renewal of this contract.
Questions, Commissioner?
I apologize for my porky pig impersonation. I don't know what happened.
Listen, I remember when you were deliberating on this three years ago and how you arrived at your decision to support this. The fact that you're bringing it back again is confirmation that you've really liked their services, and it's been an efficient move for your department. As I know, you've run a very efficient, you know, you run a very efficient operation, Mr. Yulberry. So with that, Mr. Chair, when you're ready for a motion?
Go ahead.
Happy to make that, then I'll make the motion, we approve the contract buying between Weber County, Weber County and Pictometry International for aerial photography.
Thank you, and I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair?
Approved, yes, sir.
I'd like to hold or strike item five from the agenda, inasmuch as that's gone, that's by the petitioner, asked to be taken off and also recommended by legal counsel to...
I understand that, so we'll move on to agenda item six, if that's all right.
Great, thank you.
We'll take that off. Agenda item six, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and the United States Department of Ag Natural Resources Conservation Services to facilitate repairs to the Ogden Valley, Ogden and Weber River, and Ogden City and West Haven. Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning.
Come back.
You have before you a grant award agreement, contract between Weber County and the Natural Resource Conservation Services, which is a division of the U.S. Federal Department of Agriculture. Last year, during 2019, there were four sites on the Ogden River that the banks sustained, sustained substantial damage. One site is just above Monroe, just below, just above Monroe Boulevard. The other three sites are around 21st Street Pond, and then one site is in West Haven City on the west side of 1900 West. This contract also includes two letters, one from West Haven Mayor and one from the city manager of Ogden City stating that they would take care of the 20% match, and they will oversee the construction and take care of all the bidding and work associated with this. So, absolutely no cost. I'll oversee the grant management, be the go-between between them and the county, make sure any reimbursements that come through, the proper documentation is taken care of with Scott, our comptroller, and that they're meeting all the requirements within RCS and providing the updated reports and such. So it'll be no cost to the county at all, since these four sites, five sites are all in Ogden and West Haven.
Five sites, you said?
Yes, sir, five sites.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Harvey, questions?
You've had a wealth of experience with these grants in the past, have you not, Mr. Peterson?
A little bit, a couple times.
Lots and lots, actually, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and I saw, Mr. Chair, I see no reason why we wouldn't support Lance's request here. One thing, can you just identify for me just current condition on how the water runoff or potentiality of water runoff would be between Riverdale, South Ogden, where the Birch Creek comes in, and in that area there? Is there any anticipated danger there? Mr. Wilkinson's still in the room. Anything we've got there? Are we looking pretty good there, from what you...
I think, I think we're looking okay with the water here. Of course, that can always change, but right now, the weather, weather patterns that we're in are, are not substantial enough to have a significant rain-on-snow event. We'd have to be really high in our elevation. We have had rain-on-snow events as late as April, but that's when we've had three feet of snow on the ground up in the Upper Valley. So, you look at all the snow tell sites, and I debated about sending you some snow tell sites, but there, we're 75%, 80%, you know, of that curve, and we're curving, peaking almost a month early on our melt. So I'm not too worried about any significant events coming at us.
Thank you.
I would agree with that. Okay, anything else, Lance?
No, just Fatima, if this gets all approved and everything, if you could email me a signed copy, so I can get it to the folks in Salt Lake, they're, they're getting a little fidgety on me.
We'll get that done for you.
Thank you.
Assuming, assuming I have a motion.
I have, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion that we approve the contract buying between Weber County and the Department of, U.S. Department of Agriculture, as presented by our emergency management man, Lance Peterson.
Thank you. I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Lance. We've got an approved contract. Commissioner comments. Commissioner, since you're the, in the right-hand seat there.
I'll just...
Time's yours.
I'll just make a brief comment to say I have appreciated and respected very much, Sheriff Roar, your leadership through this unprecedented time of, of concern with this COVID-19. this COVID-19. I, I respect and admire you for that, and I just wanted you to know that.
Well, that's very kind, thank you. Yeah, it's been, it's been an interesting week or two, and as I said earlier, you know, we give, I give thanks to my fellow commissioners, you and Commissioner Jenkins, being an integral part of this, and our, obviously, our team, our, we couldn't, we couldn't make this happen without the strong team we have here. We don't know how this is going to turn out at the end of the day, but it will turn out. And I think that we'll have some lessons to be learned from this, positive lessons that we may be able to take forward for our next adventure. So again, we'll, we'll see what happens, but I'm positive with the people we have here in Weber County, with our community, that we will come out of this thing and, and be better informed, better educated, and willing to move forward in a very aggressive manner after we're through this. So thank you, Commissioner. I'd like a motion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor say aye. We're adjourned, thank you.
Aye.